All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome to Harden County Commissioners Court. Sorry we're getting a little late, sorry we've had some technical difficulties. But we're ready to begin now, I do believe. You all ready? All right, all members of the court are present with the exception of Commissioner Kirkendall, who is absent today. So with four members present, we do have a quorum. This regular meeting is called to order on July the eighth, two thousand twenty-five at ten oh six A M. Everyone will please rise from the invitation delivered by Commissioner Cooper, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord, we ask you to be with us today as we go about the business of the county. We ask you to be with those who have lost friends and loved ones in Central Texas tragedy. We have one member of our audience who's been personally affected by this, so we ask you to be with the LaBeach Law Firm in these trying times. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item number three is to consider and possibly approve the June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes as presented by the Honorable County Attorney, County Court.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Beckman. Number four, consider approval of request by the Honorable Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer, to cancel all registered claims from June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, and approvals of today's cash date. Good morning, Mrs. McWilliams.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of one million, nine hundred thirty-four thousand, eight hundred ninety-six dollars and thirty-nine cents. On our cash report summary and general checking, we have eight hundred sixty-six thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars and sixty-nine cents. In our first financial bank general checking special money market, twenty-seven million, five hundred thirty-five thousand, forty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents. And tax pool general, three hundred sixty-two thousand, three hundred seventy-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. For a total in cash funds of twenty-eight million, seven hundred sixty-three thousand, six hundred seventeen dollars and eighty-six cents.
Second. That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Number five is authorization to pay county bills as presented by Mrs. Candace McKinnney, County Attorney. Good morning, Mrs. McKinnney.
Good morning. Three approved expenditures for June twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh were nine hundred seventy-four thousand, two hundred seventy-seven dollars and fifteen cents. Three approved expenditures for July the second were fifty-one thousand, one hundred forty-one dollars and twenty-nine cents. Expenditures for today, July eighth, are one million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars and seventy cents. We have one additional bill for TAC insurance for health, dental, life, and vision, three hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine hundred twenty-six dollars and twelve cents. Total expenditures and transfers are two million, five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five dollars and twenty-six cents. First payroll for June twenty-six was six hundred forty-six thousand, seven hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents. Total transfer for the June twenty-six payroll was one million, one hundred fifteen thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Move to take the bill.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. McKinnney. Number six, consider approval of request by Mrs. McKinnney to amend the fiscal year twenty-five general fund budget to reflect local cost shares under a contract with the Texas Division of Emergency Management for the following hazard mitigation grant program projects. Project number zero five two-two, the Harden County Boggy Creek Drainage Study. And project zero five two-three, the Harden County Black Creek Drainage Study. And project zero five two-four, the Mill Creek Drainage Study. And that transfer will be two hundred forty-four thousand dollars even, decreasing the fund balance by that amount in the general fund, and then increasing the expenditure by creating new line items, zero one zero seven hundred four three one, that's Boggy Creek at seventy-four thousand. Zero one zero seven hundred four three two is Black Creek at one hundred six thousand. And zero one zero seven hundred four three three is the Mill Creek Drainage Study project at sixty-four thousand. So that's, that motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook to approve his transfer, any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Uh, Amanda, or Tucker might could answer this. Once we do a drainage study regardless of where it is, and I'm looking more along the lines of this Black Creek one, once we have a drainage study for that area, even for future projects, we don't have to go back and get a drainage study. A drainage study is good, I guess, from now on, for a certain area.
Yes, sir. It will be good for a very long time. You know, if there's a lot of growth, a lot of development in that area and stuff like that, we may have to have one in the future, but this will identify several projects that will help with alleviating some of the flooding in that area. I went and met with the engineers last week. They've already identified a few problems just with the LIDAR. They haven't put boots on the ground yet, so.
So, all the projects that we've done, uh, over on the west side, we've never done a hydraulic study on Black Creek?
No, on the creek, no.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to add that the Drainage District Six had reached out to me, Jefferson County Drainage District Six, to let me know that they have done some drainage studies of the Panama Bow and other areas that will, uh, once we get those studies from them, I think they're wrapping those up now, we'll be able to get copies from them, provide those to our engineers handling these drainage studies, and that should cut out some of the work that has to be done on the studies. And then as Commissioner Young said, the projects are going to be identified to give us shelf-ready projects to apply for future grant funding. And we've been working to get these grant funds for what, about two and a half years, maybe three? So you know how long it takes to get to where we are today. And once we have these shelf-ready projects here in about twelve to eighteen months, then we'll be able to apply for future grant funds to improve drainage on these waterways. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. I want to thank Jefferson County Drainage District Six for bringing that up to us and to offer that information to us. It's going to be very helpful. Number seven is to consider approving and authorizing the payment to Cadence Bank for the payoff of the two thousand twenty-four Kubota M-six S dash one-one-one S H D C four-wheel drive tractor with Terrain King K B twenty-two, twenty-two foot boom mower, serial number ending in three-six-four-nine for the tractor, and zero-eight-zero-seven for the mower. This is for their R and B two department, and the total payoff amount is one hundred three thousand, three hundred twenty dollars and ninety-six cents. These funds will come from the one hundred fifty thousand dollar transfer approved in Commissioners Court on May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, designated for equipment payoff purchases, I'm sorry, payoff, purchases or related expenditures. And if approved, amend the fiscal year twenty-five R and B three budget as follows. We would transfer one hundred three thousand, three hundred twenty-one dollars from the Roden Bridge fund balance into zero-one-seven-six-two-two-six-four-nine, equipment notes R and B two in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, five hundred fifty dollars. And then the line item ending in six-seventy for interest, three thousand, seven hundred seventy-one dollars.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eight, consider approval of request by Mrs. McKinnney to amend the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five general fund budget to transfer funding from the Commissioners Court budget to the general fund transfers as follows. Decrease expenditures on the local match hurricane safe room line item zero one zero four oh one two seven eight, in the amount of two hundred thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. Decrease expenditures on oh one oh four oh one two eighty, county attorney supplement match, eleven thousand, six hundred eighty-five dollars. And zero one zero four oh one two eight five, county judge supplement match in the amount of six thousand dollars. And then increase the three expenditure line items, zero one zero seven hundred four three nine. That's actually creating a new line item that says transfers to Harden County, I'm sorry, to Hurricane Safe Room F four thirty-nine in the amount of two hundred thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. Zero one zero seven hundred one four five, transfers to county attorney supplement F one four five in the amount of eleven thousand, six hundred eighty-five dollars. That's creating a new line item. And another new line item, zero one zero seven hundred one four seven, transfers to county judge supplement F dash one forty-seven in the amount of six thousand dollars. Candace, you have a motion by Commissioner Cooper?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Young, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Um, it's just a bookkeeping entry to move all of the transfers into one location in the chart of account. So it's just a chart of account cleanup.
Thank you very much, any others?
All the transfers in that area.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number nine, consider and possibly authorize the county judge to sign a two-year renewal of the interlocal agreement for nine-one-one public safety entering point services with Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission for the operation of a public safety entering point in the sheriff's dispatch center as requested by Sheriff Davis. This is just a renewal, I believe. Is that right, Lieutenant?
Yes, sir.
Anything you want to add to that? That's your motion by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Young, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number ten, consider approval of request by the Honorable Matthew Minnick, County Attorney, to authorize the purchase of thirty-two, I'm sorry, of thirty-two ounce Harden County customized standing cups not to exceed fifty dollars per cup, and the total purchase not to exceed two thousand dollars to be utilized from the three thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and ten cents currently deposited into the general fund from the Texas Association of Counties for promotion of healthy county initiative. The purpose of these cups will be to encourage participation and sustain employee engagement in health and wellness activities throughout the year. Mr. Minnick, the Chair of the Healthy County Committee for Harden County.
Yes, we met, uh, we've met quite a few times. We receive, um, a certain amount of funds each year for, uh, the goal is to promote healthy county and to provide like gifts and things like that and encouragement. We received thirty-six hundred and seventeen dollars and ten cents this year. Um, we've gone through a few ideas. I was here a month or so ago asking for something that we realized we could not do, so we came back and came up with a different idea. Um, TAC actually came down last, uh, week or so ago and gave us some ideas and some incentives. And so one of the one things we decided to do was to provide, um, that we thought would be a good idea was to purchase some cups to give out as, uh, for encouraging people to sign up for the healthy county, to, uh, ten thousand steps. There's going to be a, a, a walkathon basically that's going to be happening with TAC that will participate in. You'll get tickets for those types of things to win these at the Christmas banquet at the end of the year. So that's what the Healthy County Committee came up with, is a way to utilize those funds.
Second. That motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eleven is to consider approval of request by Mr. Minnick to authorize the procurement and purchase of breakfast items not to exceed one thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and ten cents in total for two meetings on August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, given by the Texas Association of Counties to promote the Healthy County Initiative. The funds will be utilized from the same funding source that we talked about a few minutes ago. The thirty-six, seventeen, ten deposited in the general fund from TAC for promotion of Healthy County Initiative.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook, any discussion?
And just for clarity, this is, um, TAC's going to come down and explain to, um, all the employees, and everyone's going to be welcome to attend. We've set enough, enough time, I hope, between the times. I think one's at eight-thirty and the other one's at a little at then. If I remember correctly, I think it's eight-thirty and eleven, and the goal is, they're going to tell us how to sign up for Healthy County, and then they're going to talk about the walk, the little walkathon that they're going to do over the course of time. And so, uh, we would encourage all the employees. We'll send out an email with everything to, to attend.
You still walk every day, Commissioner Cooper?
Yes, sir.
You ought to get into that.
Not yet, please. I mean, when I get up, I walk.
Yeah?
Put off.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Minnick. Number twelve, consider and possibly approve setting a speed limit of thirty miles per hour on the following county roads in the Country Wood, the State Subdivision, Morris Road, Venira Road, Lawrence Lane, Creekside Loop, Country Wood Boulevard, and Country Wood Circle, all located in Precinct Three. We held a public hearing this morning at nine forty-five A M. We had two residents that showed up, and, uh, one spoke. The wife didn't really want to speak, but she did a little bit. We got the idea that they were both, uh, very much in favor of setting the thirty mile an hour speed limit. Commissioner Young, I'll turn it over to you.
I've also talked to several, several other residents that have no issues with it. They are very supportive of it. I have not talked to anyone that has any negative, uh, comments to say about it. So I move that we approve the thirty mile per hour speed limit.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. You have those signs up tomorrow?
Absolutely.
Number thirteen, consider and possibly appoint Mrs. Belinda Harrington, Human Resource Director, as the ADA coordinator. This role is responsible for ensuring compliance with Title Two of the Americans with Disabilities Act as required by the current Texas dot avi- aviation grant that the county has. Anything you want to add to that?
No, sir. I think that pretty much explains it.
You've already kind of been doing this job. We just need to make it official.
Yes, sir. This is just more for, uh, the citizens, contractors, things like that. We already, I already do it for the employees.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number fourteen, consider and possibly appoint an ADA committee. This committee will be responsible for ADA policy development, review accessibility barriers, and provide recommendations to improve access to programs and services as required by Title Two of the Americans with Disabilities and the county, county's current Texas dot aviation grant. You have a recommendation, I believe you've already provided to us, uh, for this committee. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I have, um, Commissioner Cook, David Sheffield, Dale Williford, Sean Whedon, and myself.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, and we appreciate Commissioner Cook and everyone else who's agreed to serve on that committee. We're loading you up on committees. Thank you.
I noticed.
Well, when you offer, that's what happens. We appreciate you. Number fourteen, consider, that was fourteen. Number fifteen, consider approval of request by Mrs. Harrington to authorize the county judge to sign the following items to ensure compliance with Title Six of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four and county's current Texas dot aviation grant. Title Six Non-Discrimination Plan, Title Six Non-Discriminat- Discrimination Policy Statement, and the Title Six Assurance and Solicitation Forbidden. Anything you want to talk about regarding these?
Um, I have had, uh, the county attorney, Matt Minnick, review everything, and, um, he said everything looked good, so.
All is approved as to form?
Yes.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Harrington. Number sixteen, consider approval of request by Commissioner Kirkendall to authorize the purchasing agent to solicit bids to overlay approximately one thousand twenty, one thousand five hundred twenty-five feet by seventeen feet on Bussey Road located in Commissioner Precinct Two.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Seventeen, consider approval of request on Mrs. Misty Sims, purchasing agent, to authorize the county judge to execute change order number three with L Z Services LLC regarding parking lot improvements. This is something I asked Misty to look into with L Z. Um, there was a, uh, sidewalk right out here by the front door, or the public entrance, that was recently renovated. I think y'all seen that. And it has made a big improvement on keeping water from, uh, people having to walk through the water to get in and out of the front door. We thought, or I thought, there was going to be sidewalks installed from there out to, uh, all the way across the parking lot to, for the road where people park along, uh, the road back there on Crocker Street. However, I missed that. You know, those bids were very, um, complicated to go through the way that, that, that we did those. So, uh, I had asked Misty to reach out to L Z to see what it would cost to get that done, as well as to seal coat and re-stripe the public parking lot and the overflow parking lot in between the floodplain office and the, uh, annex building. The seal coat and re-stripping of the public parking lot is fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars. That includes the, uh, striping the curbs as well, which I don't know that that's ever been done. Also to seal coat and re-stripe the overflow parking lot, including, uh, all parking spots, is also fifteen thousand, two hundred. And then to, uh, demo existing curb and excavate new sidewalk area in the area that I just spoke about. And to farm and pour ADA sidewalk was eight thousand, nine hundred dollars. So the total net for these change orders is eighteen thousand, six hundred dollars. And I would like to add that Commissioners Court's already allocated, uh, the total amount for this project, which included the parking lot over at the Agrolife Building, which we're not going to do. So we're still going to be way in under what we allocated. The total amount of the project is now three forty-seven, nine seventy. If I remember right, we allocated around five hundred and eighty thousand to do all of them. And so we're still going to come in way up, way under what we allocated, even if we approve this change order.
Just a question, we're.
Yes, sir?
Go ahead. I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Go ahead.
Where would this new sidewalk be?
If you go, uh, you know, there's two green areas that, uh, are in those roads out there, uh, in the public parking lot there. Take some of that green out and make sidewalks there, and then paint a crosswalk across there for people to walk all the way out to the road.
Okay.
And it also ties in, there's a sidewalk along Crocker Street that doesn't have any concrete coming into the parking lot. That tie all that in where people can get on sidewalk and walk all the way in without walking through the grass. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. And just to reiterate, I thought that was included, and when it didn't get done, I realized it was another line item on the bid that we didn't approve the first time around. Number eighteen, consider approval of request by Mrs. Sims to authorize the county judge to execute change order number three, change order number four, and change order number five with Construction Managers of Southeast Texas LLC regarding courthouse and jail renovations. Mr. Wall, do you want to talk about these? Let's talk about change order number one. I'm sorry, number three.
Number three.
Looks like this has to do with additional abatement, is that right?
Yeah, there's some, uh, courthouse second mobilization, additional rooms for abatement. Uh, because of the phasing, we didn't want to take all the restaurants out at once. And so whenever the abatement, uh, consultant, he had one mobilization. Uh, but this is for a second mobilization totaling, uh, thirty-one hundred dollars for the courthouse. If it come out of that contingency, we have a, the beginning contingency for the courthouse was seventy-three thousand, four hundred and nine dollars. So that thirty-one hundred dollars would be counted against that contingency.
All right, and then change order number five? I'm sorry.
During the construction, uh, there was, the contractor was drilling, I believe, for some plumbing on electrical lines, uh, on the second floor slab, and during so, uh, hit, uh, uh, some electrical conduit that was embedded in the concrete. We didn't know it was there, and so when they hit that, they had to repair that immediately. And that was a charge of thirty-five, three thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-eight cents, uh, which also goes against that contingency amount.
And you now talk about this. I told you, at first I didn't really agree that we should have to pay for that. But you explained to me that that flooring is thick, and there's no way to know what's in the flooring, uh, that's on the second floor. And when they went to, uh, bust out that concrete, and they had no idea they would run into a electrical issue.
That is correct, sir.
And I think, uh, maybe the sheriff brought up some other, uh, issues today that need to be fixed in the South Court to, uh, one of y'all, and y'all know about that. Is that going to, is that going to be covered by this thirty-five eleven?
We're doing that for free.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And now, change order number five.
Change order number five is for the jail, which has a different contingency. The, the courthouse, just so the, the court, uh, uh, is, is reminded. We have, uh, a bid, we have money for the jail, money for the courthouse that we keep separately.
Yes, sir.
Pay applications and change orders, we all keep those separately. Uh, so on the jail side, um, and this is against, we have a contingency of two hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars that was built into it. This was, uh, for the plumbing fixtures on the jail side. Uh, this is the installation of three, uh, twenty amp, one hundred twenty volt electrical, uh, dedicated G F C saw, G F C I circuits. So if there is a power failure on the jail side, that, they will still have control over those plumbing fixtures. Uh, if we did have it, you could still flush the toilets, uh, but they wouldn't fill up, fill back up. They could, they're still usable. You'd have to have a bucket of water if we ever had to do that. But this ties it in on both the first and the third floor, the second floor of the jail, um, to be able to control those in case there is a power outage. This goes back to the generator.
Yes, sir. And as I understand it, the amount for the jail, the first floor and the third floor is nineteen thousand, nine twenty-six, forty-one. And then the amount for the juvenile detention center on the third floor is eleven thousand, six thirty-five, thirty-two for a total change order amount, change order amount of thirty-one thousand, five hundred sixty-one dollars and seventy-three cents. And, uh, you and the electrician have explained to me that, uh, quite a bit of wiring had to be run to make this tie in.
Yes, sir. And some of it, uh, to the court, they, the contractor proceeded, uh, in the interest of time. So I think most of the first floor, of all the first floor work has been done. But, uh, on that original jail contingency sum of two, two hundred and thirty thousand, five ninety-one, uh, if these change orders approved, the contingency amount is a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, twenty-nine dollars and twenty-seven still, uh, available in the contingency to absorb.
And the sheriff and Mr. Tucker had both asked to have this work done, uh, to make sure that they had backup for the, uh, plumbing control system over there in, in the event of a power outage. So, uh, definitely needed, and, uh, and, and Mr. Wall says this amount is, is, uh.
Yes, and the contractor, when we first, uh, had it, we had requested during one of them meetings that they provide more detailed backup, so that should be included in your package.
It is, yes, sir. We appreciate that. And I move to approve all three change orders, number three, four, and five as presented.
Second.
That motion by Judge McDaniel, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Greg. And again, we're, uh, all very sorry for your loss.
Thank you, Judge.
Yes, sir. Number nineteen, consider approval of request by Mrs. Lisa Rocker, Harden County Crime Victims Assistant Center Director, to solicit and accept donations to provide needed school supplies and backpacks for school-aged victims and clients of the Harden County Crime Victims Assistant Center for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year. Good morning, Ms. Rocker.
Good morning.
Uh, you discussed this with me a little bit. Y'all have some, uh, victims of crime that need some help with getting school supplies, and you do have some people wanting to donate, but you need permission to do that before you get started, so that's why we're here.
Second.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Mrs. McKinnney, do we need to set up, is there already a fund set up for them to take donations in for this?
Yes, sir.
So we need to have a separate line item created, and we'll do that in the next meeting. All right, if you will work with Mrs. McKinnney or someone in her office, and let's bring that to court on, during our special meeting on the fifteenth.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Number twenty, setting a public hearing to receive comments from citizens of Harden County to discuss the abandoning of a two-tenths of a mile portion of Whitetail Forest Road between Lot Thirty and Lot Thirty-three of the Whitetail Forest Subdivision located in Precinct Three as requested by Mr. Chad Green and Mr. William Lemus. Commissioner Young?
I was, uh, contacted by Mr. Green initially. He bought the land down at the end of this road. Um, all of that land has always been used for a hunting lease. Uh, the, the county road maintenance actually stopped. The, this portion is a dirt road. Um, and they would like to put up a gate to keep the four-wheelers, um, and people that are trespassing on their property to get down to Black Creek, um, to stop them from doing that. And actually, I think it will help some of the drainage in Black Creek because these four-wheelers go in and, and play around in, in the creek and, um, change the direction of the water flow, basically. So, uh, I think it would also be beneficial for, um, the county.
All right, we would like to have a public hearing. We could do it on the twenty-second, and, uh, maybe we do that one during the regular meeting. If that's okay with you and the rest of the members? So we'll do it on July the twenty-second during the regular meeting. We'll, we'll have our very first item on that agenda will be a public hearing. All right. Is that a motion?
Yes.
That motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cooper to set the public hearing July twenty-second at ten A M. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. You got any more public hearings we need to do? Number twenty-one, discussion on any other non-agenda item without taking action, including announcements which may be of interest to the public. Does anybody, uh, present have any discussion items or any announcement? Commissioner Cooper?
Uh, Greg, last court, I believe, was we authorized, uh, the safe room to proceed, uh, where we at there? Or we, do we have anything holding us back right now?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Do you want?
Would you like me to bring it up? We received an email from Greg Monday, is that right, yesterday?
I believe so.
Yeah, the contractor was not able to hold his pricing, so, uh, he sent us the extra pricing that it's going to cost. Uh, we're going to meet later this week and discuss our options there and bring that to Commissioners Court, you know, July the fifteenth or the twenty-second. So yes, it is held up for now. We issued the notice to proceed, and then the contractor said that, uh, two or three of his subs couldn't hold their prices, and we did not know that before Monday. So. Thank you. We will, uh, meet with the Grand Administrator and Mr. Wall, uh, later this week. By the end of the, this week, we'll have some information and have it ready for either the fifteenth or the twenty-second.
I'd like to add, Judge, it might be helpful to have the general contractor, uh, present at this meeting.
Yes, sir, good idea. At the Commissioners Court meeting?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Sounds good. Any other discussion or announcements? Representative Holt, thank you for being here. Is there anything you want to say, or you got a special session coming up? So are you getting well rested for that?
No.
Starts on the twenty-first, but wanted to pop in today and just thank y'all for all the work that you're doing, appreciate you.
We appreciate you, and hopefully the special session will go smooth.
Never know, state government.
You said it. All right, if everyone's ready, we'll move on to item twenty-two, this is a workshop item, so we have concluded our regular business, and there'll be no more action taken today. We will conduct a workshop to discuss the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-six Harden County budget, including anticipated revenue and expenditure, line items as necessary regarding any office or department. An addressed request made by any office holder or department has to increase expenditures for personnel or operations within their budget. The following offices and departments have made special requests that will be discussed, and we'll start with, excuse me, Mrs. Connie Beckman, the county clerk. We have a letter here from Mrs. Beckman, and Miss Beckman, I'll turn it over to you regarding your request.
I was want to give Tracy a little bit of appreciation, a stipend of two hundred and fifty, which can be taken out of my preservation, because she does deal with preservation. When she became chief deputy, I did not put her up at the total that I was making, which was in my budget and I could have. So this is still not going to be quite what I was making. Also, when I became county clerk, I did not refill her position, we did eventually go to a part-time, so she does, she does a lot for my office. She goes above and beyond. When I'm not in the office, I know for a fact that that office is ran as I wish, and she is so good, and I'm asking for two hundred and fifty dollars a month stipend out of preservation.
And you've checked with Mrs. McKenney, and the funds are there to support that stipend?
More than enough.
Since Commissioner Kirk and Dolls not here, I'd like to go ahead and speak and, and tell you what he had brought to me, and then, of course, open it up to the Commissioners to see what the consensus is. He had a little bit of concern because the Salary Committee had done so much work to try to make sure and keep positions across the county at a certain level. And he was concerned that this was going to bring things out of, out of, out of whack. But as Mrs. Beckman said, even at this two hundred and fifty dollar a month stipend, the chief deputy in her office would still not be making what was budgeted and the amount that would be, where she would be today over the raises that have been given over the past four by the cycle. So this still keeps her under that amount, but does get her up to what Connie and I do agree would be chief deputy clerk paid for the county clerk. So I just wanted to bring that up, Commissioner Kirk and Doll had said that, and my answer to him was that this would still have her under the amount, it wouldn't be out of whack with any of the others, such as the chief deputy clerk in the district clerk's office, for instance. Any other comments or discussion regarding this request? Would it be the consensus of the court for me to include this in the proposed budget?
Yes.
I would say yes.
Okay. So Mrs. McKenney has presented us with the worksheet, and that would be a total increase to the preservation fund for fiscal year twenty-six of three thousand, seven hundred and six dollars, including salaries and fringes for that stipend. And I will ask her to please include that, because I don't touch those line items, because if I do, she'll not like it, I'll mess something up.
Thank y'all very much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And we appreciate Tracy, I, I get to work with her fairly often, and it's a joy to work with Tracy, and we appreciate her and all of your office.
Thank you, Judge.
All right, next we have a request from the county attorney, that's item number twenty-two B, and we'll turn it over to Mr. Minnick, let him speak about that. And anybody who wants to stand there, you're welcome to, if you'd like to sit at one of those tables, you can do that as well, I want to make sure everybody knows that they're welcome to do that. Mr. Minnick, your request?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have the privilege of having five budgets to go over with you. So I guess I'll just start at the top on my first budget, which is our general budget, the county attorney's general budget. We did a few months ago purchase a program called iCrime Fighter. We originally purchased four hundred and fifty cases, I believe, at fifteen dollars a case, to get us through the rest of this year. Benefit of this program is essentially it allows the agencies, Sillsby, Sour Lake, Lumberton, Kims, to be able to send their cases electronically directly to our office, so they're not having to come physically be here. It allows us to get cases faster, we've been having some issues, and I'm sure the county judge is aware, cases not being turned in as quickly as we'd like to. If you're in jail on a misdemeanor class B for more than fifteen days, if I don't have a complaint filed, you are entitled to a PR bond, thirty days for a class A. And as you know from law enforcement side, that's pretty quick. But if we could have a situation where we can do things electronically, we had a case last week where we had somebody in that situation, and we had to get Sillsby to get a case over to us immediately, had Sandy go and pick it up and bring it in, just makes things easier. I really like the program, we're slowly implementing it, right now we're just working with the Harden County Sheriff's Office to get that done. I do anticipate us going to Lumberton and Sillsby and the rest of the agencies in the next few weeks to kind of get them on board as well, but I really enjoy the program. The contract does have us coming in October paying for, Rebecca and I both agreed to do a thousand cases each, fifteen dollars, so that would increase our software to fifteen thousand dollars for iCrime Fighter. I will say that iCrime Fighter would be utilized for eDiscovery, we were using eDoc for eDiscovery, which was forty-four hundred dollars for each of our offices, so that line item will no longer be in our eDoc. It'll just be eighty-eight hundred for the, for the software for eDoc for basically case management, and then it's fifteen thousand dollars for the year for the software purchase of iCrime Fighter.
How much is eDoc going down to me again?
Forty-four hundred.
Forty-four?
Now, we'll also say that next year, just for the court's knowledge, these cases that we do not utilize roll over to the next year. So when we purchase the four fifty this year, if we don't utilize all four hundred and fifty of those cases until October first, those cases will roll over. And so when we purchase the thousand cases in October for the next budget year, if we don't utilize all one thousand of those cases over the next year, then we will have those roll over, and so we won't be asking for a full fifteen thousand dollars next year. We're just not sure at this point in time, maybe we roughly file anywhere from seven hundred to nine hundred a year, I would say, is an average for us. But you also have to think we will be putting class C cases that will go to trial, those aren't added in those numbers. Juvenile cases, we haven't really figured out whether we're going to put those on iCrime Fighter or not, that will add. And so we put a thousand as a safe buffer for Rebecca and I, and if it looks like that number is, is too high, then I anticipate us being able to save money in years' future by having those cases roll over.
So this is a thousand?
This is a thousand.
No, 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 a thousand each.
Thousand each?
Yes, sir. And there are some years that county attorney will file twelve hundred to fourteen hundred, but the last two years, that number has dropped a little bit, so.
So the cities, when they join in on this, will, they're being expensed to them?
No cost to them, it's just for, basically, when you pay for a case, that's for everybody to use. And so the iCrime Fighter team will go to the agencies, set them up, explain to them, but this is the only cost associated with the iCrime Fighter. Okay, now I will move on to the second one, the second request in this budget line item, there is a printer on the third floor. Rebecca originally, the district attorney got into a Xerox contract for a printer on the third floor. She originally had one of her secretaries there, as well as my assistant county attorney. So she asked if I would take it over now that Michelle has been brought into our office. I didn't realize it was a lease, but I did agree to take it over. We were able to find ways to pay for it in our budget this year, so I did take it over a month or so ago, and so I have been taking it over. I am asking for an increase to pay for that amount, it's thirteen twenty for the entire year, roughly, because there is, I think it's ninety-one dollars a month, and there's additional costs for each print that you do. And so it ends up, I think we've been averaging around a hundred dollars to, about a hundred to a hundred and ten dollars a month on that. So I am asking for an increase there. And then the third thing on that general budget is that my investigator is going to be bumping up to a masterpiece officer, and so I'm asking for the budget to reflect that from the eighteen hundred dollars to the twenty-one hundred dollars based upon her masterpiece officer license.
Going back to item B regarding the printer, you are using it, you need that printer?
We do, yes. I, I planned on just buying one, but when I found out that it was a forty-eight month lease, I, we kind of were stuck with that, so we're going to take it over.
Well, the right way I was, the way, place I was headed there is if you didn't need it, we'd see if maybe somebody else needed it, or if maybe somebody had one, they were leasing and fixing to get out from under, we might just slide it to them. But if you need it, then you keep it, but after the forty-eight months, you plan to let it go and then buy a cheaper printer?
Well, well, and honestly, Judge, if you find somebody that needs it, I can buy one. So if you find somebody that could utilize that lease and take it over, I have no problem with that. But we do need a printer on the third floor for CPS documents and things like that.
So if you're using it and you need it, and this, I think we should do this, but if something changes later, we can always talk about it later.
I'm looking at your line item for office equipment rental you're adding. Your request that they add thirteen hundred to the twenty-two hundred, just there now?
Yes, that, that's for, we have a, a large Xerox in our home office, in the main office, and that's utilized by us, and so that's what that pays for.
Uh, Judge, I know the DA probably will be here next week, but will we reduce hers, or was it even in her office equipment rentals?
I don't know. I'm not sure.
I don't believe it was in hers originally, I think she was finding a way to pay for it. This was added from when we added the individuals for Senate Bill twenty-two, and I think we realized, oh, we need a printer up there. I think we had a printer that I purchased up there originally, but it wasn't doing the job necessary, I bought an expensive printer, and, you know, with CPS documents, I mean, those can be hundreds of pages at a time. And so they ended up getting into a lease with one, so I think she found a way to pay for that in the budget, but I don't want to speak for her, but I do believe that was the case. Because it was purchased or got into the lease in the middle of the budget year.
And I've already asked Matt if this Senate Bill twenty-two money could cover this and it going to be used for salaries, so.
Can I ask one quick question since you brought up the investigator? I'm looking at a line item on your budget for investigator mileage reimbursement, when, when was that implemented, Candace?
Oh, that's been there.
Years ago. Okay, it used to be significantly more.
Whenever we went from a vehicle allowance to mileage reimbursement, that line item was put in?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And honestly, it's not utilized. I think I used, we've used it once this year, one time, and that's when we went to Orange to learn about iCrime Fighter, a long time we've utilized that fund.
All right. Before we move on to item number two, is there any discussion regarding these three requests?
See, seize his own money, I mean, that's, that's standard with the sheriff's office.
All right.
So.
Moving on to item number two then, under the county attorney supplement budget?
Yes, so this is the budget where we receive from the state, half of my salary comes from the state supplement. Up until this point, that supplement was having to be reduced because of, based the way that the county attorney's salary works, I can only receive a certain maximum amount. And so because of that, we had to create a supplement budget to, for office supplies or for other employees, we could utilize it for employee salaries, things like that. Now that the legislature has changed the pay for elected district judges, that now affects the elected prosecutors as well. So that budget will actually end up being significantly only for county attorney salary. I will not be able to utilize that fund anymore for office supplies, for salaries, and things of that nature. The reason I bring this up is because it affects number three. And so I don't know if y'all have any questions about the second budget, but basically it's just going to go to county attorney salary, there won't be a budgeted line item anymore for that.
So the amount you get from the state is currently being split between you and some other people in your office and some office supplies?
Right, so like, we did some renovations on the third floor, we did some renovations in my office, we were able to utilize that state supplement that was overpaying me to be able to utilize those funds, but now.
Starting in April or October first, you'll be able to keep all the funds and that along with you.
That's correct. That's correct. And so now my third line item, which is the pretrial diversion budget, that's the budget where we receive funds from defendants who go on to pretrial diversion contracts, they pay a fee to our office to administer the program. We can utilize those funds for salaries, for office supplies, but they have to be specifically related to the pretrial diversion budget. So these first two, which involves increasing Kelly Chinowitz and Kalisha, Kalisha Bayos stipends, one is being increased by two thousand, one is being increased by forty-five hundred. That looks like a lot, but I will say that the reason why those numbers are being requested is they were receiving from the supplement budget those amounts. So if I was not to find a way to pay for those, they would actually be losing that money that they currently are getting. I believe we have the money to sustain that in the pretrial diversion budget, and so I'm asking for the Commissioners Court to approve increasing their stipends that currently get from the pretrial diversion fund by two thousand and forty-five hundred, so they don't sustain a loss in their current salary.
And this is what they're currently making now?
Currently making now.
Between the pretrial diversion budget and the attorney supplement, county attorney supplement budget, this is not an increase?
Not an increase.
It's just an increase in that budget to keep them where they are right now, right?
To keep them where they are.
And Candace, you agree that the pretrial diversion fund would sup, would support these increases?
That's what I was trying to look at before we lost internet.
I will say.
I don't know where you sit at the moment.
So we currently have a surplus of about sixty-eight thousand dollars in that account, and we bring in anywhere, depending upon the year, between forty to sixty thousand dollars a year. So we have more than enough to sustain the request I'm making in the pretrial diversion this year. Now, in future years, if those funds do not come in significantly, or how they have been, then in a few years from now, we could have to look at that. But as of right now, we have a healthy supply in the county attorney pretrial diversion budget.
When you start to look at that, would you, would you be coming to the court and just asking to reduce those, their, their salaries would be reduced if the money's not in the pretrial diversion budget?
Yes, and I do have some other pay that goes through that pretrial diversion budget, but they are aware that at any point in time, that pretrial diversion fund doesn't keep going, that there's a chance that they could lose some of that supplement.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, do we?
You said this year, everything is good up until October first, when you said this year, you're talking about the budget starting October first, correct?
Right.
So they're good, right, till September?
Yes, oh, yeah, they're, they're covered.
And what, what we're, or what we're considering is next budget?
Correct. The, the next budget, we have, right now, we have a sixty-eight thousand dollar surplus. And so for the remainder of this year, the budget was significantly lowered because we had an employee that no longer works for us, that was getting paid from this fund. And so our, our budget went from like sixty thousand dollars or so to now like thirty something thousand. So I, I believe that in twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, we should be able to afford these changes. And going forward for years to come, I do believe as well, as long as our pretrial diversion fund continues.
Well, I'm not for making criminals pay for anything they pay for, because that's why we have so many people that work in the judicial system here, is because of criminals. It's the only thing we can get them to pay for, I'm all for that.
And then these next two on CMD, this is only, this is only based upon the, if there's an intent to increase the employees' three percent raise, if there is an intent to do that. I will say that Kalea Kraft and Tatiana Zalesniak, they're both in my office, they receive most of their funds from grant funding. They do not receive, the only one who receives any money from the county is actually Kalea, she receives about seven thousand from the county. So last budget year, when we did a three percent increase, they did not receive any of those funds, because the grant funds don't increase by three percent. And so this would be a second budget year where they would not receive another three percent unless I found a way to cover that. And so what I am asking is to increase Kalea's stipend, she receives currently nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars from the pretrial diversion fund. An additional thousand would be ten thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six, that would cover a three percent increase for her. As well as Tatiana, a three percent increase for her would be a five thousand dollar stipend from the pretrial diversion fund. I'm asking, I do think the funds were, are there to justify it, but because they have not received a three percent increase, I'm asking, I do have funds to be able to cover that and be able to give it to them if possible.
I know Kelly and Kalisha work pretrial diversion cases, I know Kalea does, does Tatiana, or will she start if we do this?
She will have to start doing pretrial diversion stuff. Now, we'll say she does do special prosecutor cases, and so those cases can be given pretrial diversions, but she's going to have to actually actively do some additional pretrial diversion duties, and we've already discussed those in my office, starting October first.
So just to restate what you've already said, this is increasing their pay, but it's because they didn't get an increase last year, and this equates to a three percent increase over what they currently make?
Correct.
And if the court does something other than three percent, would you adjust this to magic?
I would do my best to, yes. I, I, I believe the funds are there to justify it.
And then, on the other hand, if the court plan less, you're going to go less?
Well, the one thing I did consider when I did this, Commissioner, is that they didn't get it last year, and so that was kind of what my, this is really three percent on one year, not really three percent on two years, I don't think I went to six percent really. I think Tatiana's maybe a little more than three percent on one budget year, but I tried to do it based upon that. But yes, I, if, if there's a different change, we'll certainly consider that.
Now, any questions or discussion regarding these items? I think you have another one, right?
I've got two more budgets, but they're not, they're not, they're, these are a little bit smaller. Um on the county attorney supplement twenty, uh the Senate Bill twenty-two budget, um I've been talking with Candace. If there is a way for us to pay for those last two line items um through Senate Bill twenty-two. We just don't know how much the total is at this point in time. We have a total of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to spend. And so at the end of this budget year, if it looks like our amount is only two seventy or so, and there's five thousand dollars left, I don't wanna leave that money on the table. And so my intent is, if there is funds in that account to be able to utilize, we will utilize those to cover C and D some, so that number will decrease. If we've spent the full two seventy-five on salaries and things of that nature, then um then obviously I'll have to keep it in the pretrial. But if there is any way for me to cover it under Senate Bill twenty-two, we will certainly utilize those Senate Bill twenty-two funds to cover that.
That'll be good to me.
And then on the CPS budget um that we do, I I just for precautionary purposes, I have not received the bill from Hot Docs. But they go up almost a hundred dollars every year. And so this is the the number that's currently in my budget, the CPS budget, was not this year's cost, but the year before's cost. And so I'm just adding additional two hundred dollars. If you wanna take it from miscellaneous, and we don't utilize those funds anyway. I'm more than welcome to. I'm just preparing that, I anticipate, because it comes in around January. That it's gonna be another hundred dollar increase as it has been for the last two years, and so I just wanted to cover that just in case.
Do you uh, can you reach out to them and ask them?
I could see if they'll give me a quote.
I know the sheriff and others have to do that each year to reach out and see what their increase is gonna be next year, so if you'll check with them and see and just let me know.
Yes, I'll check.
Once I have that number, I will adjust that and um and deduct it out of miscellaneous. That'd be, that'd be the easiest one of all of them.
Yes.
I haven't looked at it in detail, but I want to say that the hundred dollars was added licenses. If I remember back in the past, but I'm not certain of that. I just remember we had some added licenses that may seem to be about that much.
Yeah, I figure, I remember it.
All right, any members of court have any comments, concerns regarding the request made by the county attorney? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Number twenty-two B, I'm sorry, C is the elections department, Ms. Freeman. As I recall, the main increase you were asking about was postage, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you put this worksheet together for us, which we truly appreciate? Go ahead.
Uh we we only do a mass mail out over the registration parts every two years. Um so I didn't realize that it was quite as expensive as it is. Um the cost for twenty-twenty-three was twenty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. And I worked with our vendor, um with the postage increasing everything, the new amount for the twenty-two-five, twenty-six is around thirty-one thousand dollars. Um so it didn't acc- increase too much from twenty-twenty-three. But I I don't know what he was estimating at twenty-four.
All right, any questions regarding the postage item? Any uh requests for increase? So basically next year it'll go back down, and the next year you'll need to go back up?
Yes, sir.
Got it. All right, what about the software and license?
Uh so the software license and support, um I, they do a four percent increase um on our election equipment. Um through Verity, which is part of our civic, and through um Knowing, which is our whole pad um software. Um so I just, I allocate for that four percent. Um and then we also have access imaging solutions. That is our voter registration database. We keep all of the applications. Any paperwork that has to do with any voter we have is in that system. Um it's actually kind of, we're about the same we were last time, because we've cleaned up quite a bit of it. We've taken out a ton of data that wasn't necessary anymore. Um so we're not too much over that forty-eight hundred that we were at um in twenty-four. And then of course Adobe Pro and um the GIS system, which is helping a lot with our our roads and everything inside of our system.
You have two Adobe Pro licenses?
I do not. Um I'm not sure exactly what happened in twenty-twenty-four. We originally um received one for my clerk that's in there. Um and then I think we worked with Mike and the county clerk's office had one, and so they kind of split it up somehow. And so I think maybe that's where that extra charge came from, but the next year, we're not gonna have both charges, just just one.
So uh for software license and support, you need that line item to be twenty-nine, nine hundred?
Um thirty, thirty-seven fifty.
Thirty?
And then like the office equipment rentals, that's just the the um cost of our Xerox machine.
Anything else you wanna add? Any questions from the court? Any concerns with this? Or any objections? All right, thank you very much. Number twenty-two D will be the technology department, Mr. Tucker.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Here we go. All right, I'm respect respectfully advocating for continued employment and support of both the grant fund program and technician. Positions within the technology department, with both positions becoming budgeted within the FY twenty-six budget. Uh these positions are, have been grant funded uh for the last several years and and basically have been cut. Uh these roles are essential to the efficient and secure operations of county IT infrastructure, applications and digital services. The loss of either position would significantly hinder the county's ability to serve uh its departments. Uh employees and citizens effectively. Uh the two positions, the programmers' responsibilities, who develops, maintains and updates in how software applications. Uh such as the courtroom, uh audio video systems, the kiosks. Uh we actually created our own ticketing system because the ticketing systems were yearly costs to the county. And and we've done it for free uh a- at this point. Uh the system with integration of county data systems with third-party vendors, create scripts to improve data accuracy. Uh develop secure access controls and date permission protocols and custom systems. Uh conduct training uh for for some of the internal software tools and platforms that we use. The technicians' responsibilities, and let me note, uh the programmer also has these responsibilities. Uh anytime that that the techs are busy uh or overloaded or out. Uh technicians' responsibilities are to install, configure and maintain county computers, printers, network, hardware. Uh obviously, this morning, we had a technology issue and and we've adapted and overcame that issue uh to a certain extent. And I believe from a couple notes walkover, fully back online. Uh respond to daily techni- technical support tickets and resolve issues in time and manner. Manage user accounts, permissions, system access for county employees, perform system backups, hardware upgrades, routine maintenance. Assist in maintaining network security and monitoring firewalls, endpoint protections. They also troubleshoot connectivity issues on both wired and wireless access across county buildings. They provide support for video surveillance, voice phones, security badge systems. Uh documents, IT inventory, hardware assignments and repair histories. Uh they ensure uh continuity of operations during power outages and system downtimes. And assist in onboarding uh new employees uh with technical uh setups and and training if if need be. The collaborative.
Is that all they do?
Uh no, sir. There's, I said, there's quite a bit more that they do. That's just uh what I briefly know that they do on a daily basis. Uh the collaborative work between programmer and technicians ensures hard county systems remain functional, secure and adaptable. To evolving technology demands. Reducing or consolidating these positions would create bottlenecks, decrease the reliability and expose the county to increased cybersecurity risk. We respectfully request the court to consider the long-term value and necessity of retaining both positions. The roles not only support current needs, but also provide a foundation for future growth, innovation and resilience of county operations. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration. Any questions?
I just wanna add uh one thing. I kinda make it, uh I'll I'll make brief what he just said somewhat. Uh we have two technicians that are paid through health services grants. I think one was picked up around six years ago, if I remember right, five or six years ago. And about two years ago, we got another technician uh paid for through health services grants. Uh Mrs. Whitley let me know about two or three weeks ago that uh she did not think those grants would be renewed October first. That she could continue supporting them to September thirtieth, and that's when Aaron said uh we really could not lose those positions. So the request was made uh to see if we could pick them up, and that's kind of the short version of what Mr. Tucker just said. In addition to all the duties that they have, which, thank you very much for that.
And to note that the other budgeted line items, uh obviously, they need in increasing any of those uh for the coming upcoming year. Uh I think they're they're good where they're at uh for the technology department.
I'd agree with the two positions, because this is twenty-twenty-five. Everything we do is is good technology.
So and and make note there, it would actually be three positions. We already have a county-funded position, and then these are two grant-funded positions. Uh and then my one-fifth, maybe one-eighth that I do for technology as well.
We need to have that commercial, what was that cigarette commercial? We've come a long way, baby. You could, we'd get a contractor in here and take, things change. I don't like changing myself. I mean, it's just like with the sheriff's department, when me and you, the judge was deputies, who would have thought that you had a deputy that's gonna specialize in dealing with them nuts? Now you got a mental health deputy. Uh I mean, that's the way things are going. I guess we just gotta go with the flow on on things like this. Things is changing, so you know, so we got to, but the people that that uh. The positions that you are requesting here, that the county pick up, are all onboard, we wouldn't have to hire anybody.
No, sir. We would not hire any additional staff unless one of those staff decided to leave. Uh currently, they are already onboard.
I I don't have a problem with this.
And I understand where where you were coming from with contracts, you know, to contract to work out, but we've been there before and. It's just easier to me when it's all handled in-house.
Yeah.
Um you have the same think thinking process, and with contractors, you're on their timeline.
Yeah, and you also have several contractors. When the IT department was created, there was like three different contractors. There were six different networks. Now we're basically all on the same network, and the the staff that support that network, know the network, know how to fix breaks. Uh and know the the, all the different operating systems as well as software.
And you do away with the blame, can't you? Well, it's their fault.
It's not true. Yes, sir.
It's all right here.
You uh, I'm looking at the budget currently on uh salary. Uh no salary changes uh as far as, you have. Let me make sure I'm looking at this right. Information technology, IT technician, twenty-nine, twelve.
Yes, sir. I do believe there would be salary changes, because those are grant-funded positions, so they're under different salaries. So there would be an increase into the IT salary.
Okay, so what I'm asking, would would any of these technicians that's currently here that you're requesting to move over be above this twenty-nine, twelve? Just.
I was getting a budget layout of what the techs make.
I got that, I think.
Programmer makes uh this amount currently, and then uh one, the three percent raise would raise him to thirty-three, sixteen. And then the last technician hired currently makes twenty-five, and a three percent raise would raise him to twenty-five, seventy-five.
All right.
You'd have a programmer at a higher base scale, and then you got two technicians at two different base scales. One's at twenty-nine, twelve plus three percent, and the other one's at twenty-five plus three percent. Does that sound right?
Thank you.
All right, any other comments or discussion regarding this?
I don't have any issues with that. I think uh we all utilize them. Having them in house is felt very convenient.
All right, anything else you wanna say?
I think that's for the, it for the technology.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Then we'll move down to twenty-two E, the building maintenance department. Uh Brian is here, but of course, this is a request that uh, he's asked me for for a couple of years and I've put it off. Uh and now I'd like to ask the court to consider this for the coming year. So uh he needs another part-time custodian, uh really for every day, but especially to cover whenever people are out. It's hard to find somebody to work temporary. Uh well, you just call them as needed. Uh people like the county clerk, take them away from you if you hire a really good one, and then uh.
And uh where's Lisa?
And then Lisa, then Lisa took her from her. But uh this would be a part-time position. The total payroll expense for a part-time custodian at a pay rate fifteen dollars and fifty cents an hour. Would be seventeen thousand, three sixty plus fringes. The fringes would be forty-three, thirty-five. Total payroll expenses being twenty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars for fiscal year twenty-six. And there's a line item, or actually, there's two line items in the uh building maintenance department budget for temporary. Uh and I think the seventy-two hundred each, and we could reduce one of those, so we would offset that by reducing that seventy-two hundred. And uh if I remember right, I think I looked yesterday, and you only spent around four thousand for this year.
Yes, sir.
Uh that's just the salary part, the fringes would be added on to that. And so we would keep that other seventy-two hundred dollar line item in the budget, but we would only use it as needed. And in fact, possibly the next year, we might could just uh look at uh reducing that or doing a layover if if we need to. Anything you wanna add to that? You sure?
Sure.
You have any questions for Brian? Any comments or concerns regarding the request? Is there already a part-time line item in the budget for a custodian, part-time custodian?
Not for a custodian, but there is a part-time line item.
So we need a new line item for part-time, part-time custodian?
Um.
The uh.
We'll just put it in the same one.
The same part-time?
The five hundred hours.
Yeah, are you looking at it? There's two for five hundred each, right? We would just remove one altogether and leave the other one at five hundred.
So we're mo- removing one?
Yes, sir. So that would reduce the budget by seventy-two hundred, but then add two, uh twenty-one, six ninety-five. So the twenty-one, six ninety-five would be added, but seventy-two hundred, and that would be offset by removing that line item?
All right.
So the total was about fifteen thousand?
Yes, sir. Ma'am, yes, ma'am. Sorry about that. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, that takes care of all of the uh what I call special requests that's been made. Thank y'all for taking the time to go through all of those. Uh open it up now to twenty-two F, if there's any other office or department that would like to speak regarding the budget that uh hasn't already spoken. Or let me know about any increases. We do have a couple of others that we'll address on July the fifteenth at one-thirty. Uh I know the health department's made a few requests that I have not thoroughly reviewed yet, but I didn't get those until late Friday. And we have the request that y'all are aware of from the DA and the uh two district judges. And I think there's a few more things that we'll address uh on the uh July fifteenth. I did, when I put the memo out to everyone regarding the budgets, I did state that I intend to include a three percent raise for all personnel. Including uh officials and hired uh personnel employees. Also included that the uh health insurance benefits will see an approximate seven percent increase for health insurance. I did not include, uh but I think there's also an increase in dental insurance that we're gonna have to cover in the budget as well. I don't think it's a, it's a high percentage, but that amount is not a whole lot per person, correct? As with every year, things just keep going up. But uh we're doing really well. I appreciate everybody that works hard to make sure that they uh, you know, stay with doing their budgets the way they do. And and uh I think everyone here that works here at the county government are very fiscally responsible. And uh that's very appreciative by me, and I know the citizens appreciate that as well. But back to my question, is there any other office or department that wants to talk about their budget? All right, do y'all have any questions with me regarding any proposed budget preparations that I'm working on? Anything that I haven't brought up already? Candace, you have anything you wanna add? Ready to get it over with?
Not at this time.
Ernie, I put you on the spot. You had told me yesterday, y'all had a few meetings of the benefits meeting, and I was gonna be right making one recommendation for sure on dependent coverage. Are y'all ready to make that, or you wanna wait?
No, we need to wait. Go over, we want to put our numbers together, go over one more time.
Do you think we could get that information to Candace in time to have it ready for the fifteenth, or is it gonna be the twenty-second? Or is it gonna be later?
Remember, when when are we supposed to have the next meeting?
Our our next meeting is on the twenty-second, but I think that everybody's, I think we can probably send an email.
Our, our next meeting is on the twenty-second, but I think that everybody's, I think we can probably send an email out to everybody. Cause I think everybody's pretty much in agreement on the health insurance.
Right.
If y'all don't mind, if y'all would just talk about that, and then if that's the way that, the, if that's gonna be the recommendation of the court, I'd like to ask Candace to work that up where we can see that. And, uh, and talk about it on the fifteenth.
Okay.
Okay? Candace, would you mind working that up? If you'll get with, uh, Melinda, as long as that's okay with, uh, you. Like you don't have enough to do. Alright, anything else regarding the fiscal year twenty-six proposed budget? Commissioner Cook, number twenty-three.
Uh, vote adjourned.
Okay.
Have a second, Dr. Commissioner Cook, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, y'all have a great rest of the week, we'll be back here on the fifteenth.